Tuesday, July 25th, Planning Commission meeting to order, all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Begin, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Changes to the agenda?
No, Chairman.
Roll call, please.
Chairman Saylor?
Here.
Vice Chairman Stoppenbrink. Commissioner Helmar?
Here.
Commissioner Pruitt?
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Public comments, under Government Code 54954.3, members of the audience may address the commission on any item of interest to the public or on any agenda item before or during the commission's consideration of the item. State law prohibits the Planning Commission from acting on non-agenda items. If anybody wants to speak at this time, seeing none, we'll move right along. Information and consent calendar, we have one item, the approval of the minutes from the May 23rd, 2023 meeting. There's no need for discussion, the Chair will entertain a motion.
I'm motion to approve.
Commissioner Pruitt made the motion, does it have second?
I second.
Commissioner Helmer made the second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, eyes carry, three, two, zero. Public hearings, we have two public hearings, the first is Planning Commission consideration of tentative parcel map 22-02, southeast corner of Elm Avenue, State Route 33, 198, and El Rancho Boulevard.
Thank you, Chairman Commissioners, tonight, staff is recommending approval of tentative parcel map 2202 for APN 070-100-21S, which divides that parcel into four commercially zoned parcels in conformance with the City of Colinga general plan. This would be adoption of Resolution 023P-007. So in March of 2023, the city accepted for processing an application to subdivide the existing 7.69 net acre property into four parcels. The purpose of this request is to subdivide the parcel, is to, to subdivide a parcel is to allow the property owner to sell the commercial zone, commercially zoned parcels of land to prospective commercial developers, consistent with the subdivision map act. The project is currently designated for commercial land use by the Colinga general plan and zoned as general commercial. The purpose of the applicant's request is to subdivide the existing parcel that are currently zoned general commercial, intending for developing the commercial zone parcels in the future. The parcel sizes proposed are consistent with the general plan and municipal code, minimum lot size standard. Approval of the request would allow the applicant or their designee to subsequently submit an application for development, so long as the proposal is consistent with the general commercial zoning designation. This application does not include any land use entitlements, which will require separate application, future studies, environmental review, including consultation with Caltrans for access off the state highway. The project does qualify for Class 15, Section 15315 Minor Land Division exemption. Therefore, notice of exemption and compliance with the California Environmental Act was prepared. Given the nature of the project to subdivide a parcel into four commercially zoned parcels and no development occurring, it can be seen with certainty that there's no possibility that this activity in question may have a significant effect on the environment. So a public notice for the project was noticed in accordance with state and local noticing requirements. Additionally, adjacent property owners within 300 feet of the project site were notified of the hearing by the city via public notice being mailed out on July 13th, 2023. In terms of reasons for recommendation when approving a tentative parcel map, there's five different findings the Planning Commission makes. Staff feels that the following findings have been met based on the evidence in the application and applying the standards of the subdivision map act, the zoning regulations, and applying conditions. So one is the Planning Commission finds the proposed project will provide a stable and diverse community, is consistent with the orderly physical development of the community, and is not detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. The Planning Commission finds the proposed project meets the minimum, the requirements and standards of the subdivision map act and the City of Colinga municipal code. The proposed project design and improvements are consistent with the general plan and any applicable specific plans since the design complies with the good goals and policies set forth in the general plan document. And that the project provides for a logical and orderly expansion of the City of Colinga, and the project site is physically suitable for the proposed future commercial development due to the proposed lot sizes and access to approved streets. In all dedications, street improvements, the installation of infrastructure such as sewer and water lines, storm drain facilities, and other public improvements have been evaluated to connect to existing facilities. And some of these may or may not apply based on this particular application, because sometimes when a parcel map is submitted, if there are public improvements that are required, those could be triggered and discussed at this time, because it's a typical, just basically subdividing the property and that there's not really a clear direction in terms of what access will look like until future studies and consultation with Caltrans occur. That basically, some of these don't necessarily 100% apply, but they are findings that have to be considered based on the application. So with that, yeah, the resolution is attached to the staff report for approval. This is a recommendation of the commission to the city council, so this will go to the city council on August 3rd. Basically, it was a joint public notice, so it was noticing both this meeting and the August 3rd meeting for the city council. So there are conditions that have been applied to this particular project, and a lot of it has to do with controlling access easements, making sure this development is orderly and it's cohesive in terms of the four parcels. And they're not going to act independently, so if one, not like an infill project where someone comes in says I have a vacant lot on the corner of Fifth and Elm and I want to develop it, this part, all four parcels will coincide together in terms of access, because Caltrans is not going to provide one driveway for each parcel. It's going to be more of kind of like a larger center type atmosphere. There'll be CCNRs that are applied to this, that'll, that'll cover access easements, drainage, utilities, all of that as this, as a project is proposed, as well as transitional standards for separation between the adjacent residential uses and the commercial uses as well. And we have conditions that apply to that, and other things will be recorded to the parcel map to that effect as well. So with that, this is a public hearing, if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Questions?
Just one, one thing I want to note, on the resolution, the date is, in the second paragraph, we say on June 27th.
Oh, yeah. I noticed that when I was working on my council packet, and noticed that when I was using this resolution, I saw that. So we'll make that change on the, I plan to make that change on the resolution. Yes.
I can still sign this, though.
You can still sign it, because the, we can make the change on the non-signature pages.
Perfect, thank you.
Do we have any idea of what kinds of commercial development is going to be?
I have not received any indication of exactly what's, nothing's been proposed to the city.
Okay.
So I'm not 100% sure of what's actually going in there, I'm not, I, I just don't have any clear indication.
Okay. And did you get any input from any of the notices that went out?
I had not received anything, no.
And do, any idea why the parcels are, I mean, they weren't just kind of cut like this, the one on the end is short, it's, it's like a chunk out of it, and then the second one is
Like an L.
Then behind, yeah, good, it's like an L.
If the develop, if, I'm not sure if Hal's on the, if Hal made it on the call, or the owner. I know they, they do have some type of prospective development for that corner parcel.
Okay.
And I think it's based on, that's what the need of the developer is, is that size.
Okay.
The other ones are kind of remainders, but because of that orientation, we did ensure that the transitional standards are applied based on any development. So it'll trigger, because if you look at it, that parcel's not directly adjacent to the residential district, it kind of, that second parcel wraps around. We'll ensure that even if parcel one develops first, that the transitional standards are applied to the adjacent residential and commercial development.
Thank you.
Any questions? Yeah. Off the top of my head, I can't remember. Gas stations, do they fall under commercial general or commercial service?
I think service stations are in any commercial zone.
Okay.
I'd have to, I'd have to look, but I think they're permitted.
That's what I could foresee with that parcel one, and I don't know how well it would go there, especially like Sean said, with only one entrance. But, I mean, if there's nothing proposed, then...
Yeah, we have no official application. I mean, obviously, when we've gone to retail conferences, the, this particular area has been looked at by some of the gas station companies that we've talked to, because there still is always interest in additional gas stations in town. But nothing's concrete in terms of what exactly is being proposed there.
And what will happen with the trucks that are there now?
Well, I don't know what's going to happen with that. Right now, if this all goes through, there's no material change to the land until an application's submitted for development, so, and then that's when it triggers, how much improvement is Caltrans going to require along the highway frontage for one development, two developments? Those, those will all come as we start those conversations with the, this allows the developers to be able to try and market the property better, because then it's a set parcel that they can develop on, although there is going to be a lot of overlapping with the other parcels, too. Like storm drainage is not going to be on every parcel, they're going to have a shared basin, so.
Okay. This is a public hearing, we will go ahead and open the public hearing for anyone who wants to speak for or against this resolution, may do so by raising their hand, when recognized, can come before. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and if there's no need for any discussion, the Chair will entertain a motion.
I motion to approve.
Commissioner Helmer made the motion.
All second.
Commissioner Pruitt made the second, roll call, please.
Commissioner Helmar?
Aye.
Commissioner Pruitt?
Aye.
Chairman Saylor?
I vote aye as well. Motion carries, three, two, zero, moving right along to the next public hearing, Planning Commission consideration of combined development applications, CDA 22-02, 256 East Polk Street.
Thank you, Chairman Commissioners, so tonight, staff is recommending, there's multiple recommendations, this is a combined development application with multiple land use approvals. This would be adoption of Resolution 023P-008, recommending the city council approval of a combined development application for 256 East Polk Street, but it includes three different parcels as part of the general plan and the zoning map change. So there'll be an approval of a general plan land use amendment from mixed use to commercial service or service commercial, approval of a zone map change from mixed use to service commercial, approval of a site plan review application, approval of a conditional use permit for automotive repair, I'm sorry if I was a typo in my report, apologize for that, 256 East Polk Street, and approval of a notice of exemption pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act 15301 for existing facilities. So the City of Colinga received an application from the applicant, Rito Gutierrez, for a general plan amendment rezone for APN 083-10206, 07 and 08, including application for site plan review, conditional use permit, and environmental review for 256 East Polk Street, which is APN 083-102-06. And that's in order to facilitate opening an automotive repair facility. APN 083, the 07 and 08 are included in the rezone and general plan amendment to facilitate orderly zoning district boundaries, since 256 East Polk Street is west of the two adjacent parcels, and we have service commercial on the other side where the JR Auto is current, is currently located. These parcels are not included in the site plan review and conditional use permit approval. They will be reserved for future land use activity and subject to subsequent land use approvals not determined at this time. So no business activity will be permitted at these locations until some type of subsequent permits are issued, whether it be a permitted by right type of use, or whether it be something that requires some type of future land use and conditional use permit. Currently, the land use and zoning designations for 256 East Polk Street is mixed use, which currently prohibits automotive related activities. The applicant is requesting that the land use designation be changed from mixed use to service commercial, which would allow for the automotive uses subject to a conditional use permit based on the type of use activity proposed. So the applicant plans to use the southern portion of the building for vehicle maintenance, and we're, and we're talking about 256 East Polk, so basically, I, on my exhibit, it's a little bit confusing, but 256 East Polk is basically the buildings on your guys' left, just in line with the building that's right in the middle, to the westerly edge of that building. So it's that, that particular parcel there. So they're using the south portion of the building for vehicle maintenance and repair for vehicles being sold at JR's Auto Sales was directly adjacent on the corner of Barker and Polk. To the east of the subject property is at 296 East Polk Street. The north half of the building will be used for office space. So the applicant has stated that there may be other maintenance and repairs options occurring beyond that of vehicles preparing for sale. This may include a customer base from Colinga or surrounding communities. So the property is currently developed and requires primarily interior tenant improvements, on and off-site improvements and safety inspections to allow the occupancy. This will be discussed in more depth as we kind of go through the site plan and the conditional use permit section. Let's see, can move on to that part. So as we all know, with certain commercial uses that are more intense impose a possible impact to surrounding properties, they're regulated through a conditional use permit process, where uses require special consideration to ensure they can be designed, located, and operated in a manner that will not interfere with the use and enjoyment of surrounding process, or properties. So the process for the conditional use permit application is designed to evaluate possible adverse impacts and to minimize them where possible, where possible through the imposition of specific conditions, which we've applied to this project as well. So under the, under the application, the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for automotive repair, so the, the zoning designation is automotive repair major at 256 East Polk Street. So automotive repair major is defined as the repair of automobiles, trucks, motorcycles, motorhomes, boats, and recreational vehicles, including the sale, installation, and servicing of related equipment and parts, generally on an overnight basis. This classification includes auto repair shops, body and fender shops, transmission shops, wheel and brake shops, auto glass services, and tire sales, but excludes vehicle dismantling, dismantling, or salvaging and tire retreading or recapping. The use of the property will be limited to tire servicing, patching and plugging tires, including rotating tires, and same-day services such as oil filter changes, belt replacements, minor repairs. With no vehicles being stored overnight unless in certain circumstances where a vehicle must remain overnight will be placed in the bay within the facility. These would be vehicles that are visually operational, no wrecked, dismantled, or inoperative vehicles will be left overnight or stored on the property. So really, the intent from the communication from the applicant is to use this really to get these vehicles, I guess they'd say DMV ready for sale. So the hours of operation, the plan is to operate the facility Monday through Sunday from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. with two employees. The existing 3,400 square foot structure will be used for office space and auto repair. According to the site plan, 2,000 square feet will be used for office space and 1,400 square feet of it will be used for auto repair, which is just one existing bay. The existing footprint of the structure will not be modified other than modifications to accommodate auto repair and occupancy for the office space. So in terms of access, access for the site will be through the Polk Street entrance. As a condition of approval, the existing driveway will reduce to a standard commercial width of 27 feet to accommodate vehicular traffic. Currently, the driveway is the full width of the lot, which produces unsafe vehicular movements and backing into traffic. Also, the driveway that is located on East Valley will be required to be removed and constructed with new curb gutter and sidewalk. East Valley Street is not a, is not a wide enough street, nor is it necessary to introduce commercial traffic to the residential street where there is sufficient onsite maneuvering available for, for exiting and entering off of Polk Street. In terms of utilities, all existing utilities are there, if there's any need for increased connectivity, they would just need an encouragement permit to do any kind of, any additional connections. But all major services, city services are available for, are already connected onsite. In terms of hydrants, it's currently one hydrant on East Valley Street to accommodate the development. As it relates to parking, the parking requirement for an office is one space per 400 square feet floor area and one space per bay for automotive repair facility. Therefore, based on the proposed office space and the one bay, this site must provide six spaces. The proposed site plan provides 17 onsite, which is the off-street parking spaces, including one ADA stall. However, space 17 on the site plan will have to be removed to accommodate the 15-foot setback on the block wall, so it's in line with the existing block wall that's at JR's Auto Sales, and the code requires the, the particular setback. In terms of site improvements, pretty minor in terms of site improvements, the applicant will be removing and providing new asphalt within the project area, including landscaping along Polk Street frontage and the East Valley frontage. Since the project's adjacent to the residential district, which is East Valley Street, transitional standards must be applied to reduce the impact of the commercial development. Where a partial, where a parcel in a commercial district is adjacent to a residential district, a solid mason wall of no less than six feet, no more than seven feet in height, shall be erected along the property line. Since the district boundary is a street, the wall constructed along such district boundary shall be setback from the property line, and so the setback was established at 15 foot six to match the setback of the properties to the east. The space between the street and the block wall should be landscaped with trees and shrubbed, shrubs, reviewed and approved by the Community Development Department. And in terms of refuge containers, the proposed development does not show the location of a refuge enclosure, and their size, shape, and location must be consistent with city requirements. The applicant, as a condition, will be required to provide a location as approved by the city for the required trash enclosure. The addition of a trash enclosure is not expected to reduce the parking space count beyond the minimum standards. In terms of public notification, these, the public hearing notices, just like the other item we discussed earlier, were mailed out to each property owner within 300 foot of the boundary of the subject property. The notices were also posted on the city's website and three public places, which is the library, City Hall, and Chamber of Commerce, since the city does not have a paper of general circulation. So in terms of reasons for recommendations, there are findings, standard findings that need to be made for each land use entitlement. So we have listed in the report, the general plan amendment findings, the rezone findings, the site plan findings, and the conditional, conditional use permit findings. And with all these findings, staff feels that these can all be accommodated and found based on the conditions of approval being applied and the consistency with the zoning regulations for the intended uses. I have attached several documents, kind of giving you relation of the, of the actual site, the application package, the site plan, as well as the resolution. That is a recommending resolution to the city council for approval of all of the entitlements, which would be on August 3rd as well.
Perfect. Questions?
Did you receive any comments from the general public?
I did not, no.
And I noticed, I thought, looking at it, that the original application was dated back in 21, August of 21?
Yeah, this is, this has been, it's been an ongoing project for quite some time.
Okay. Any?
Just reworking, just the documents that were submitted, reworking the site plan, making sure that originally it was only wanting to address 256 East Polk, but we wanted to make sure in order to have orderly zoning boundaries to include this entire segment for the general plan amendment and rezone, getting those documents. There is also, because it is a general plan amendment, you have to do a notification to the local tribes, and so we had to do that, and that's a 90-day response time that they have, they have. So it kind of delays the project, unfortunately. When the project's submitted, it kind of, we try to get that letter out as soon as possible, but it does kind of delay that process as well. So there was a lot of back and forth, getting, getting to the point where we're at now with the operational statement and the application documents.
And you mentioned that it was for recreational vehicles, cars, trucks. Are we talking like pickup trucks, or are we talking like big rig trucks?
The way the code is written, it would, it's not necessarily for big rigs, for truck servicing specifically, and it's kind of pulled out of this, so it's, there's no expectation of having large trucks.
And are there any anticipated issues with noise?
No, because all the repair work, and the way the zoning codes worded is that all the work needs to be indoors. And basically, the way the zoning code was written is, that's how it reduces, where it makes it, because it, okay, let me repeat this here, let's see. So with auto repair, when it's indoors, the code is, sometimes it's permitted by right, because the fact that all the work being done indoors, it's going to reduce that sound, that, that noise issue. Now, if it was where, where it was allowed to be, things were able to be worked on outdoors, then we'd have to look at more of an analysis on what kind of impacts that would have. But with all the work being done indoors, typically, we haven't had to do any kind of analysis on sound, based on the way the code is written, the intent is, is that based on it saying that all work needs to be done indoors, that's its, its way of reducing that impact on sound.
Thank you.
As well as the transitional standards.
Okay, that's all the questions I have.
Perfect. Alrighty, this is a public hearing, so we'll open up the public hearing for anybody that wants to speak for or against this. Raise your hand, when recognized. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, if there's no need for any further discussion, Chair will entertain a motion.
I'm motion to approve.
Commissioner Pruitt made the motion.
I second.
Commissioner Helmer made the second, roll call, please.
Commissioner Pruitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Helmer?
Aye.
Chairman Saylor?
I vote aye as well. Motion carries, three, zero. Congratulations, thank you. Moving right along, staff reports.
I have none, Chairman.
None? Commissioner announcements? All righty, well, then, meeting adjourned. Thank you.